Welcome, everybody, to the 6:00 PM City Council meeting of July 5th, 2022. The roll call reflected all council members are present except for Councilmember White, who was asked to be excused. I'll defer to Vice Chair Lopez to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
If you'd consider joining us for a moment of silence? Next on our agenda is an opportunity for council members to acknowledge people or organizations in the community that are doing good. I don't know, you're pulling out your book.
I can just maybe make a notice and hopefully we can do something more formal. Mayor McKinley retired from the Ogden Nature Center, and there was an event last week, I think, was it last week, to celebrate that retirement, and the new director is also in town, Jonathan Creel, and seems to be a great guy, but anyway.
Yep, and I think we do have something more formal planned. Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Ritchie. Anyone else? That includes the mayor, if you have anything.
Appreciate being included. Just say, want to say thank you to all the men and women in our armed services and everything. We had an amazing airshow that kind of showcased and displayed that, but 4th of July is always the time for me to kind of reflect at the sacrifices that were made, and I want to recognize all those in public safety in all different shades of uniform and say thank you for that. I think it's appropriate the day after that to just publicly say thank you.
Chair, if I could take a second, too.
Sure can.
I annually try and reread our country's founding documents, and I have done so again, and just am amazed at the forethought that those, our founding fathers had to write those documents and to come up with ways to keep our republic running like it has for over 200 years, and I guess I want to challenge everybody to do that same thing, to reread those documents annually, and...
The whole Constitution?
The whole one, and the Bill of Rights, and the Declaration of Independence is also an important one. So, there's three of those documents, you got to reread those every year. And if you really want to have some fun, read the Federalist Papers, because that's kind of where it all came from, is those Federalist Papers, so.
Awesome.
It'll be good for you if you do.
Cool.
Instead of reading minutes, you can focus on...
There you go.
Thank you.
Well said, Senior Statesman Blair. Okay, anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to our first item of common consent.
Chair, I would make a motion that we adopt the item listed under common consent for the disposition of Ogden City Police for unclaimed property.
Second. A motion by Councilmember Blair, second by Councilmember Hire to adopt the item listed under common consent. This particular item is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Blair?
Aye.
Councilmember Trabberka?
Aye.
Councilmember Hire?
Aye.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lopez?
Aye.
Chair Nadolsky?
Aye, that passes. Next on our agenda is reports from Planning Commission, starting with proposed city boundary line adjustment between the cities of Ogden and North Ogden. Barton Brerly.
Good evening, Chair Nadolsky and council members. This item is to consider a boundary line adjustment between the cities of North Ogden and Ogden. The property is located on Washington Boulevard at about 1500 North. It is just in Ogden City limits, adjacent to North Ogden City, and actually across the street from Harrisville. The property owner has requested that they be de-annexed from Ogden City and annexed to North Ogden City, and North Ogden City has also petitioned for that. The property is 1.63 acres, it's zoned R2, and Ogden sewer and water lines do run along Washington Boulevard frontage of the property. The proponent has submitted an application to North Ogden for apartment development on the property. There would be 50 units on the Ogden side, the south side of 1500 North, and 92 units on the north side, which include a commercial building and clubhouse. And North Ogden has reviewed this and has approved it with condition that the developer have the boundary line adjusted. So this had gone to the Planning Commission on March 2nd. The commission recommended unanimously to recommend approval to you of this amendment. The city council had two work sessions, one on April 12th and one on May 3rd, to discuss the item. So some of the reasons in favor of the change would be to avoid isolating neighborhoods so that when 1500 North is extended to Washington Boulevard, that there would, both sides of the road would be on North Ogden, and it simplifies it if utility connections for the entire project are with one city instead of having one side of the road being served by one city and the other on another city. Some of the concerns that the council had raised is there would be loss of potential property tax revenue and development fees, property taxes would be about $23,000 a year. Also, the project itself does not meet Ogden City standards for density, open space, and setbacks. For one note is that the amenities, the clubhouse, the pool, the open space are all on the north side of the road, and people living on the south side would have to cross the road, and that's a concern. So what is before you tonight would be a council resolution, which, if you adopt it, would declare your intent to adjust the boundary and ask that a hearing be scheduled out at least 60 days to consider it. So again, the Planning Commission recommended approval. That concludes staff report.
Thank you, Barton.
You're welcome.
Questions for Mr. Brerly?
You nailed it. Thanks.
Just making sure, so if we, if this moves forward this step tonight?
Yes.
We still have another hearing within the next 60 days, is that correct?
Actually, more than 60 days out, but yes, you would essentially be scheduling a hearing, at which point you would be taking public testimony, and then you could approve or deny it.
Right.
At that point, yes.
Okay.
I do have one question, actually. The $23,000 per year of revenue, is that the current value or the projected developed?
Projected developed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anything else, anyone?
That's a good point.
Okay. Thank you. This is not a public hearing, so we'll entertain...
Chair, if I could make a couple of comments before we make a motion? Let's see, there we go. I spent a little time talking with stakeholders, I guess is a good way to say it, including the petitioner on this, and you know, when we had our work session in April, I asked the question is, what is in it for Ogden? What, why would Ogden do this? And there was really, there wasn't any reasons, and that's where we came up with some other options that perhaps maybe there could be something in it for Ogden. I have talked with the mayor of North Ogden and council members in North Ogden, asked them if the roles were reversed, would they let that boundary, they said, no, heck no, we're not doing that. And so, they also were pretty unwilling to do any kind of a land swap so that, you know, the acreage remains the same. The developer, actually, he talked to me later, I think he'd met with Greg and I don't know who else, and maybe Barton, I'm not sure, and said, yeah, they really weren't able to work anything out, there was, and he kind of said, I, based on your position, that there needs to be something in it for Ogden, he said, I don't know what we can do for Ogden. So, that was kind of the conversations that I had, you know, I tried to talk universally around just to get everybody's opinion, and it seemed to be fairly consistent that there wasn't any upside for Ogden to do this, and if, so it would be my intention then, if you're ready, unless somebody else wants to say some more, I'll make a motion.
I was just going to agree with the concerns, it's not the time that Ogden can give up $23,000 in property taxes, and it doesn't meet our design standards, so.
Right.
I think, yeah, both of those, for both of those reasons, I don't...
Right. Okay, so if you're ready for a motion?
Go ahead.
That concerning the proposed Resolution 2022-14, I would move that we deny that petition.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hire, second by Councilmember Trabberka, to not adopt the resolution, thereby not declaring the intent to adjust the current boundaries. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Trabberka?
Aye.
Councilmember Hire?
Aye.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Aye.
Councilmember Blair?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lopez?
Aye.
Chair Nadolsky?
Aye, that passes.
Chair, just real quick, I would like to thank Councilmember Hire for reaching out. I know he did do a lot of discussion, or hold a hell of a lot of discussion with those stakeholders, and so I appreciate that. I know on a board that we serve on, we tried to meet with some other people from others, from North Ogden, and yeah, I mean, I can attest to the sentiment that Councilman Hires reporting on. It was, just do this, you know, just do it, but there was never any, like, give and take on that, and which is sad, because I think, in my experience, the more positive interactions we've had have been the time when we tried to work and make it work for both sides, and this just didn't work out that way.
Your 30 years experience?
Close, it's close, rounding up.
Just in, off of that, I just don't think there was anything, this was just a, this was just a bad deal from the beginning, I just don't think there was, I don't, I don't hold North Ogden in any bad regard at all, they were just watching out for their interests as they should, and that's kind of what this ended up being for Ogden.
I'm sure they were counting on us to do the same.
Yeah.
In our last work session, I said I wanted to be a good neighbor, that did not mean I wanted to do what they needed and not what Ogden needed. Part for me, being a good neighbor means working through the process and being communicative and upfront and honest with our colleagues on the other side. So, thank you to you and our elder statesman for picking up on that for us, because I think the way you did it is the right way to do it. Okay, next item on our agenda is the zone text amendment for landscaping requirements. Back to Mr. Brerly.
Okay. So this is to consider amendments to the zoning ordinance on landscaping to incorporate wirewise landscaping requirements. So just to start with, why are we doing it? We're in the middle of a drought, Utah is one of the, the second driest state in the country, and we brought this news article about the long-range forecast for the drought not going away, and this was from 2003, so clearly drought's going to be with us, or at least low water, low precipitation will be with us for a while. So, the city has been working on a number of actions to address water usage, and it's not just landscaping, so just, there's fixing pipes, increasing storage facility, possibly regulating how people water, the Parks Drift incentive program, and programs with Weaver Basin are all part of the solution. So, wirewise landscaping is just one part of a total solution. So, and, but why address landscaping? Landscaping uses one and a half times as much water as inside landscaping, as inside water usage, and it's also the most visible part when people think about water use... And it's also the most visible part. When people think about water use, they don't think, oh, I'm running my dishwasher too many times. They think automatically I'm watering too much, or my neighbor's watering too much. And a lot of those habits that you develop on the outside do carry on to the inside of, oh, maybe I ought to be more careful how many times I run my dishwasher. So we're proposing revisions to the zoning ordinance that cover multiple chapters. And I won't go in detail at all, everything that's being proposed, just hit some highlights. One is on general landscaping requirements. We require a landscaping irrigation plan with the new developments. And we've modified some of the requirements for that. We require an automatic controlled irrigation system for new landscapes. These are really common. You can get them at the hardware store. In fact, I don't know of anybody who doesn't install them these days, but these can be programmed and you can program them for when it rains to turn off and with the, not much expense, really control your water usage. Requiring a dripper bubbler for non-turf grass planters, so not just the regular spray.
Barton, you might want to mention that those are, that there's a subsidy for those smart controllers that people can take advantage of as well.
Yes, great. Yeah, I know mine's controlled by my smartphone, and every once in a while I'll just plug it on to scare the deer away or scare the neighbors or something like that. So. Some of the general requirements, current code requires that if you're only developing part of the site, that the remainder has to be landscaped. We're changing that so that if you're not developing a portion of property, you can just leave it in natural. And also that you can delay your landscaping until fall if it's in drought conditions, which will probably be in for a while. On park strips, the, you know, why we think about park strips, again, that's the most visible part of your landscaping. Also, it's one of the most inefficient to water. It's really hard to put any kind of irrigation out there without watering your asphalt or your concrete. So the ordinance would be modified to say that in the planter strips for new installations, that you can only use water-wise plants and street trees unless you're over eight feet wide. If you've got that wide, we figured that you could set up a more efficient irrigation system. And we do have planter strips that are that wide. And if it's less than three feet wide, we're saying it has to be a hard surface. In other words, you're just have a wider sidewalk. Parking lots where you have those interior islands, they have to be water-wise and they cannot be turf. In multiple family developments, require the front and the side to be water-wise landscaping, so not turf. And if areas between buildings less than 15 feet wide, could only be in water-wise landscaping. A maximum of 35% of turf for an apartment and 20% for a group dwelling. Playground areas would have to be non-plants. We're also lowering the number of trees that would be required from one per thousand square feet landscaping to one per 1,500 square feet landscaping. In commercial industrial areas, we, the proposal is to set a maximum of 15% of landscaping can be in turf grass. And those turf areas would have to be a minimum 15 feet wide. There isn't exception if you're, have like a recreation field as part of your commercial development. You can have that as grass. But the remainder has to be in water-wise plantings with water-wise irrigation.
Hey Barton, could, could you explain or educate me a little bit on why the reduction in the amount of trees per thousand square feet? Is it because of the moisture that a tree uses or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the moisture they require to establish and to, and to keep alive during their lifetime, yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's what I kind of thought. I just.
Yep.
And I guess I was daydreaming when, when the planning commission talked about this, so.
Yeah. And for single family, the, the requirements aren't really changing for single family. Doing a water-wise is optional, but we'd recommended that we not have the same limits on turf because a lot of people do use their front yards and their backyards for a lot of heavy foot traffic. So the proposal includes allowing them to have turf, but does encourage them water-wise landscaping. So the Planning Commission recommended approval of the chapter's revisions as proposed. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Barton.
You're welcome.
My only question is if Councilmember Hare was daydreaming about planning.
Maybe.
He's broken.
Yeah, well, in the work session, he was called strange for being at both Planning Commission and City Council. And we're thinking, hmm, I'm a Planning Commission and City Council.
I think, I think the term I used was sick in the head.
Yeah.
Okay, any, any questions for Barton?
I do have a question that's related. It doesn't have anything to do with your ordinance other than, well, maybe it does. My observations as, as Ogden has kind of gone into this severe drought, you know, mitigation program, there are a lot of people deciding that water-wise landscaping is no water. So they're pulling out all the grass and it's just turning into rocks. And we've gotten some very good input from some citizen people that are landscape architects and whatnot that have recommended that that's really not a good idea as well. And Greg presented that also, that, that creates heat islands and really does some bad things to the soil and et cetera. So is our ordinance going to address that? And how, if so, how does it address that?
Yes, it does address it as, it does define what water-wise landscaping is, and it is landscaping. It's, it's mulch, it's water-wise plants, it can be trees, all, it's how you irrigate it. But it's not lack of landscaping at all. So yes, the ordinance does define that and allow that.
Do, do we have a program or a plan to mitigate some of these, this misunderstanding or anything like that? I think we need to put one in. Maybe that's what I'm suggesting, is that we get on that right away before we just have rocks everywhere.
Yeah, um, you know, we do have our regular permit processes on our website, but yeah, we can see what we can do beyond that to be more proactive in advertising what you should do.
It, it's going to be really hard to, to fix after they've done that, I think. It's, you know, it's like painting bricks almost. So I think we need to, we need to have some, some way to, you know, to, to warn people if we, if it looks like that's what they're working on, or I don't know. Something like that.
Yes.
Or, or our code services people need to be able to hand a little letter saying, hey, you know what? This is what's, this is what's required for landscaping requirements in Ogden City. We're watching you, kind of a thing.
Yeah, we do have code services that actively does that, and we do get several people at the calendar each week saying, oh, I, I was told to come here. But I think as you're suggesting, the better before they start doing it.
Yeah. Well, certainly before they finish, that's for sure.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Something I was just gonna add to that, too, is sometimes when people are doing that, or even when they're just not watering right now because we're not enforcing on people because we want them to be conserving water. So trees still need a certain amount of water in, in order to thrive, you know, over the years. So that, you know, part of the communication might be that, too, like trees still need water. Because always there can be a lot of dead trees in the, especially in the parking strip.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, thank you, Barton.
You're welcome.
This also is, we do have the option to receive input on this item? Is there anyone who cares to address the council on this item? If you do, please.
Got one hand, two hands.
Got one hand online. Anybody in person care to address the council on this item? Zone text amendment, landscaping requirements. Okay, we'll go online to Heath Soto.
Am I unmuted now? I think I hit the wrong button.
You're good.
Okay, thanks. Heath Soto, Ogden resident. I'm glad we're doing something at this point. I would, and I know you're just voting on this specific thing today, but I hope going forward we'll think about the fact that we've, you know, been told about this since, since what was it? He said, 2003. We've been talking about the drought's getting worse and we're getting to the point where things are scary. And I, I think we need to look beyond just doing just enough for now and start looking at what's enough for the future and start doing that now, so we're not in such a tight position when water gets even less in our. I see a million houses being built out on the west side, past 1900 on, in the western part of Ogden. And I'm just wondering how we're going to supply all these houses with the water drying up. So I, I would urge you to start talking about, about further in the future than, than just now and maybe take, you know, a little more severe steps than we're currently taking. Thanks for considering that.
Thank you, Heath. Next up is Angel Castillo.
Good evening. Angel Castillo, Ogden resident. I am thrilled to death that we are finally here and voting on working to replace the strips and encourage people with water-wise planting. So yay, everybody on the council for pushing it through. And again, a, an extra nod to Councilmember Chaburka for championing this for a very long time. I would like to point out something that Councilmember Hare said about the, what about the rock solution? You know, people just taking everything out. And I 100% agree. I do however think, I'm, I'm a little more, more carrot-less stick person as far as that's concerned. And if we want people to take a particular action, we should offer them solutions. And I think an easy way out of this would be to look at local nurseries or perhaps some of our local landscape architects that are active within the city and ask them to come up with six or seven basic plans for the average size strip of, here are six plants that you can use in this configuration, and this is what they look like, and this is where you can buy them. Because many people don't want to water their grass and want to participate, but don't know anything any better than, well, there's some mulch and there's some rocks and I might put a plant or I might not put a plant. If we could offer them some solution, we would probably get them to comply. And the people who really have a design sense, we're going to get their own thing, but this would at least help folks that don't have access or may not have enough money to stretch to pay someone to plan for that and they want to go DIY, but they've never done something like this before. So I think that that would be a good option. And then I'd also like to just lift up where we are with water usage per homes. We're, we're totally beaten North Ogden. On their website, they use about 300 gallons a day per person. We're somewhere between 193 and 221, depending on which data source you look at. But Phoenix is at 111. So we've got to keep pushing for some solutions to figure out how we can manage and bring that water down. And I have clients that are in the industrial area by the airport, and I cannot tell you how many times I see ridiculous overwatering in the industrial area during the day, at night. I think we really need to try to figure out how we can connect with those folks to get them to manage their water better because it's all of ours and we need to make sure that we have enough to go around. Thank you.
Thank you, Angel. Okay, not seen any more hands. Back to the council for comment or action.
Chair, I'd kind of like to address a couple of those things if I could. The landscaping plans, the, kind of the, you know, the options or the, the things that people could choose are in those educational plans that are part of the qualifications to, to qualify for the, the refund, the, you know, the flip the strip program. So, so there are those places that, that people can get some help from. And I've looked at those and they are very inspiring. You know, they give you lots of ways to kind of reinvent your, your landscaping, and they're pretty good. Also, as far as water use, Councilmember Ritchie and I went to our water treatment plant and our well field. Last week? Time's getting away from me. I think it was last week with, with Justin and, and took that tour. And, and that was one of the questions that Councilmember Ritchie asked, is how are we, how can we be comfortable building new homes with, with the water situation? And, and apparently there's quite the process that these engineers have to go through to make sure that, that we are not overbuilding for the area. And Brady's here. He, he knows all of this stuff. I don't know if you want to talk, have him talk, but, because he's certainly going to present it better than me. But, but anyway, there was no concern from, I think he used the word, there is zero concern of us continuing to build what, what we can, what we're even able to build. So that gave me some help. I'm not an engineer, I, but the engineer did give us that information. So thumbs up, thumbs down, that was pretty well, that okay? Anyway, so that's my comment.
Okay, we won't make Brady come up until item five.
Ready for a motion?
Yes, sir.
And Chair, I would like to make a motion that we adopt proposed ordinance 2022-34.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hare, second by Councilmember Ritchie to adopt proposed ordinance 2022-34. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Hare?
Aye.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Aye.
Councilmember Blair?
Aye.
Councilmember Chaburka?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lopez?
Aye.
Chair Nadolski?
Aye, that passes.
Chair, I also like to make, to mention that, that we also are very happy that this day is finally here. I think I could speak for all of us. It, there's just a, a whole bunch of comedy of things that happened that, that have delayed it this far. Nobody's fault per se, it just, it's just the way it worked out. But I, I know that if you've been receiving the calls like I have from citizens waiting for this, it's a happy day, so.
Agreed. Okay. We'll bring back up Barton Barely for Zone Text Amendment, low, moderate income housing parking requirements.
Okay.
Welcome back.
Thank you. So this is to consider amendments to our parking standards for low to moderate income housing. So just looking at the general plan, a couple of the policies are to encourage better parking utilization and reconsidering parking regulations, allow use of smaller industry standards. So what we don't want to end up is what you see on the left there is just, we create lots of parking that doesn't get used and that could be used for other things, could be used for housing, for businesses, for playgrounds, for recreation areas, lots of other uses other than just parking areas that don't get used. And a couple of years ago, we did a parking study and looked at what is the typical usage of different kinds of uses, including affordable housing, market-raised housing, small commercial and big box retail. And you can see by the graph, the, the blue line that I've tried to make a little more bold in the middle there is affordable housing. And you can see that the typical usage of parking spaces is under 50% for affordable housing. And the study recommended that, based on that, we reduce our parking standards for affordable housing. And it says the required parking rate should be reduced from two spaces per unit to 1.4 spaces per unit. So in our standard, we have a number of standards for multifamily housing. The, the standard for residential areas is two parking spaces per unit. You go to commercial zones, it's a little less if you're in a C2 or C3 zone. If you're in the central business district, it's a little bit less than that. If you're near transit stops, there's a reduction there. And in the commercial zones, we have a reduction for low to moderate income housing, which is a minimum of 0.8 spaces per unit and a maximum of 1.75. and a maximum of one point seven five spaces per unit. Uh, but that does not carry over to residential zones. So if you do a loaded moderate income project in commercial zone, you get that standard. If you're in a residential zone, you don't get that. You still have to ride the two parking spaces per unit. And, uh, we did recently have a project that was in a residential zone that was a low to moderate income project. And, uh, they were faced with this requirement of two spaces per unit, even though our own parking study shows that it should be reduced from that. And the actual needs are much less than that. So we propose to, uh, reduce the parking requirements for low to moderate income dwelling units in residential zones to have the same minimum as a commercial zone, which would be point eight units per, or point eight parking spaces per unit and a maximum of one point four spaces per unit. This is what the parking study said. And then also recommend lowering that maximum in the commercial zones to, to be consistent. So the planning commission had heard this and they recommended that, uh, you adopt the, those two standards, those changes to provide, uh, low income housing in residential zones between one and one point four stalls per unit, and then to revise the existing upper commercial limit for, from one point seven five to one point four. And that concludes the report.
Thank you. Questions for Barton? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll, we'll take public input on this item. Uh, is there anyone in the, in the chambers who care to address the council on this item? Okay. And we'll go online to Angel Castillo.
Thank you. Good evening again, Angel Castillo, Ogden resident. Um, I'd like to voice support for this change and encourage you to vote yes on it, particularly because in, uh, lower or moderate income housing development, it takes a lot for it to pencil out for developers and parking requirements are usually one of the challenges. And it's kind of germane in how we use, uh, Lytec financing and TOD financing that these units are built on transit lines. So we, they're getting money and they're positioning them there for that reason. It makes sense that we adjust our ordinance to support that because it's kind of contradicting itself when those developments exist. So please pass this and allow the developers an extra tool to produce more moderate to low income housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to address the council on this item? Okay. We'll go back to the council for discussion, questions or consideration.
Chair, I would like to propose a motion unless there's more.
Please do.
Um, I propose that we adopt ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-five.
Second.
Motion by council member Chaburka, second by council member higher to adopt proposed ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-five. This is a roll call vote.
Council member Richie.
Aye.
Council member Blair.
Aye.
Council member Chaburka.
Aye.
Council member higher.
Aye.
Vice chair Lopez.
Aye.
Chair Nadolsky.
Aye. That passes. Thank you for the Barton marathon. Quite efficient, actually. Nice job. Okay. Next item on our agenda is reports from administration. We'll hear from Brady Heard on the interlocal agreement between Weber Basin Water Conservancy District and Ogden City. Welcome Brady.
Thanks. Good evening, chair and council. Um, so this will go in tandem with what Barton has already done and, and doing a bunch of the ordinance and stuff. And so this is more so on the program side as well as in the packet. There's an interlocal agreement that is, um, last Thursday, Weber Basin sat before, presented that before their board and they agreed and accepted that. And so now it's being passed on to our council to basically review it and, and approve it. And, um, along with that has the joint agreement that's an, an exhibit to that. And so with that, we're going to run through the, the program and what that consists of. Interlocal was more so the financial aspect of it in, in us having an agreement between them and making sure we get our financial guarantee out of it. So, okay. So stepping forward, some of the purposes of this program promote, um, water efficiency, enhance visual environment if it's done correctly. I think we've already kind of touched on some of that, councilman higher. Um, that's as we're reaching out to the public, we're going to be working with Mike McBride and, and marketing and trying to promote this as well as working in tandem with Weber Basin. Um, uh, obviously they've got a several avenues of incentives through Utah Water Savers and other avenues that will continue to encourage that. Um, as well as the population, um, I think we've also touched on some of that already. Um, being that we have plans throughout the city, conservation plan that you guys are, have seen in the past, that's very much in the forefront as we consider, um, building out our other plans with our master plan for water, um, and other considerations for infrastructure into the future. Unique nature of Ogden City is that we are, for the most part, built out. You can kind of see there is a lot of new development that is sprouting up more so vertically, but those are definitely considerations that we, we keep in, in the forefront and in our planning and in development and, and keeping in close contact with planning and engineering especially. So, um, and then, the state actually has some regional goals that it, it's puts out there for us. And I think by twenty sixty-five, it, it was a hundred and seventy-five gallons per capita is, is what their, their reaching goal is. Um, and so that's, I think currently we're just tracking around the one nineties. Um, and so we, we still have some work to do, but we do have time to work on that. I realize that we are in a state of severe drought. Um, however, we will continue to work through how to best, um, encourage that in conservation. And the park strip is one of those things that will help incentivize that. So, and then education and awareness, I think is one of the other goals. So, um, yeah. So this is a collaborative effort between us and Weber Basin. They've already got an active program as is. Um, the biggest hinging factor for us as a city is the ordinance. Um, once the ordinance is play, in play, that ultimately will qualify anybody within the city boundary to, to be a part of that program. And so as soon as we get that approved, we'll send it over to the district. They'll get that adjusted. So hopefully here in the next week, we can, once we get out of council here, I can continue my discussions with them and get that in, in place once it's signed and rolling. So, um, thus the city is looking to do a dollar twenty-five per square foot. And then Weber Basin will be contributing a dollar twenty-five per square foot. So in total, the incentive will be two dollars and fifty cents. Um, and we will be administering at two dollars. And then on a quarterly basis in the, in our local agreement, we would look to get a reimbursement from Weber Basin, um, for the upfront cost of a dollar twenty-five. Okay. And then, um, based off of the appropriation that happened, I think it was, I don't remember the specific date, so forgive me for that. Um, but Lisa Stout and finance had come forward and had appropriated the, the budget and funds with that and got your approval a couple of weeks ago. Um, and so there was an appropriation of a hundred, a hundred thousand. Um, and so with that, as well as taking a six hundred and, six hundred square feet at two dollars and fifty cents, we project or estimate that will be about a hundred and thirty-three properties that can benefit from this. Obviously those are projections based off of the average park strips, um, throughout the city. That could go up or down depending on the frontages and how, how those vary throughout the city. So, um, I want to say that one of the things that, that Greg had also touched on as, as part of the park strip stuff was, I think, last we ran the numbers, it was somewhere between six thousand to twelve thousand, depending on different plans that you go with. So this obviously won't encompass that whole entire thing. However, it at least helps and takes a portion of it. And so the intent is there again to have the residents at least have some incentive, but they're still going to have to upfront a decent amount too. So, um, let's see. So, uh, qualification, so they'll need to be a resident of Ogden City, um, have a current park strip and well maintained. Um, I know that there's been some concern with drought. Um, I think the biggest thing is we go out to do our consultations, it's just making sure that it's not unkept, right? That it's chucked full of weeds or having a whole bunch of other issues that doesn't show that it's been well maintained in the past in a sense. Um, obviously a lot of things are yellow right now and we understand that. We'll have that in consideration as we do those consultations. So, um, and then as they, they'll need to attend a Weber Basin class. Um, there'll be a class that they help go through some design concepts as well as showing them, um, some of the things that are potential options that they'll have, um, as well as I, I know that there's different plant species and types that they, I think in the past have worked with nurseries. And I know that was part of the discussions earlier this evening, um, that they will work through some of those scenarios. As they go through the class, they'll end up completing that and come in meeting with our planning department also as part of that process. Um,
Brady, can I, can I ask a question about that then? Um, my understanding was that that class is done online through utawatersavers.com. Is that, is that what, what you're talking about or is that something else?
So last I had talked with the district, they were working to a remote or like a online version of that.
Right.
And they had said they were still meeting in person currently. So I don't know if they've fully transitioned to that point, but I know they're trying to get to that point.
Well, no, Utah Water Savers does have a class and I, I think I was under the assumption that that's what it was, but.
Okay.
I, but, but you, you know, you're the one that knows.
Yeah. Last I, there again, talking to the district, they weren't quite to that point. So I think it would have to be the in-person class currently. Um, John said he would ultimately tell me when, um, they had transitioned into the digital version of that. And so last, yeah, that's based on the most recent information I have.
And then the, the well maintained, uh, um, park strips, uh, we had a discussion a few weeks ago about people that are getting pretty antsy about, they don't want to keep watering it.
Yep.
Just to tear it up.
Yep.
And so, uh, we had some kind of okay's that we could, people could go take pictures of it and say, okay, this is the before.
Yep.
So they don't have to keep on watering. Are you all good with that still? Is that something Matt's going to check or?
I think the biggest thing is having those pictures. They're not going to necessarily look at the timestamps on them, but those will have to be uploaded into the Utah Water Savers portal.
Okay.
Cause that's kind of be kind of the main channeling point for all this information is the Utah Water Savers portal.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Yeah. That, and obviously as, as our, our consultations go out and meet, they'll want to see some of those photos, but ultimately that'll be uploaded into that. So we'll work in tandem with Weber Basin as part of that.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, let's see. Trying to think where I left. So we did cover some of the ground coverings, um, that it'll have to be like mulch or rock or other drought tolerant type plants or even trees in consideration that's permeable to water and air, um, as well as we're looking to try and, um, keep as many of the existing trees in play. Um, obviously if they don't have trees, we'll want to try and encourage that where, where necessary or if it fits the conditions. Um, we are also looking to have, the residents will need to complete this within 10 months. So if they start the process and don't finish out in 10 months, that's kind of the cutoff line. The, the reason for some of that also is more or less first come, first served in a sense, because just to have it open-ended continually doesn't necessarily make it fair for the others as well. And we need to be able to utilize those funds wisely. So, um, and then it must not be returned back to lawn is one of the major requirements we were based from Weber Basin. And so they'll be actually doing some further additional recording on, on some of the properties to ensure some of that for the future. Um, and then it also will need to meet permitting and regulations for all city. So those are some of the qualifications. And then, um, going through the approval process. So there again, mentioning the Utah Water Savers, that's going to be the portal that we're channeling everybody to. Ultimately that, that website is housed through Jordan Valley. However, they're a sister company to Weber Basin. The intent long-term is that Weber Basin will ultimately get independent kind of of that. But right now they're feeding all that information and data and addressing through in, into Weber Basin. And then Weber Basin will relay that information onto us. And that's outlined in that interlocal agreement. That's how it'll carry forward. Um, so they'll, they'll visit that. In some cases, if people aren't maybe digital savvy, obviously they might be coming to our front office and we can help facilitate that through planning, um, at the second counter and going through some of that process as well as some of the initial consultation and layout and referring them to, to Weber Basin in the portal and getting some of that lined out. So, um, they'll do some initial site visits, much, much like the photos we already discussed, those will be uploaded in the portal. Um, the, they'll attend the class and as well as part of that process, they'll get a joint agreement, which basically outlines between us and Weber Basin, the expectations. Um, that's that exhibit A within the, the interlocal agreement. Um, and then, once they've gone through and done their notarization on some of that and we've signed it and everything, then we'll start going through the classes, doing the review process and, and, and approval of the plan. Um, from there we'll initiate, initiate any type of permits if and when there's a contractor involved. We'll work with the contractor. Ultimately it'll have to be the, the property owner that actually signs the agreements. It can't be the contractor being that it'll be binding to the property. So I know that was one of the questions that got brought up. Um, also as a participation of some of this, and this is kind of off on a tangent, elected officials will be able to apply for this. I did check with legal last time. And so that is, yeah, they're very much eligible for the program. Um, so as they go through the permitting process, we'll also come out and do an, an inspection of the irrigation as well as a final inspection of the actual project to ensure that it meets the intent of the plan that was approved. And then from there we'll look to try and get, well, we will get, um, all the final documentation submitted from the residents, meaning if a contractor's involved, any paid invoicing stating that they've paid the contractor, any W nines, um, that potentially play into effect if it didn't win in the incentives over six hundred dollars. Um, and then they'll also, as part of our process to try and expedite it, we do a bank endorsed canceled check that the resident will submit. Um, and then they'll have to have those other finalized agreements in play to where they submit that as part of it. So, um, and then at that point, that's when the city will look to reimburse or initiate the, the reimbursement portion of the incentive. So, um, and then for, I know that we had already covered some of the costs. There is maybe for those that are lower income, um, some consideration for help loans, um, through our community development, um, department that they can always go in and, and work with those personnel and getting qualification or qualified for some of that if need. So, okay. And then this is kind of the basic layout as a flow chart that we'll provide them of these steps to try and streamline it more, is more so for them to be able to go through and know the steps. And so, um, that's, just wanted to double check on my. Yeah, that's pretty much all of it that I've got for you tonight. Um, I think the biggest thing from this is the recommendation to the council for approval for the interlocal agreement, um, as, and everything that it entails. And then as soon as we get that, um, we can get the ordinance as well as interlocal, um, over to Weber Basin and get things rolling. So, yeah. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Brady, any questions for Brady?
Good job. Thank you.
Okay. Back to the council for consideration.
Chair, I'll make a motion that we adopt, uh, resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifteen.
Second.
Have a motion by council member higher, second by council member Blair to adopt proposals resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifteen. This is a roll call vote.
Council member Blair.
Aye.
Council member Chaburka.
Aye.
Council member higher.
Aye.
Council member Richie.
Aye.
Vice chair Lopez.
Aye.
Chair Nadolsky.
Aye. That passes. Thank you. Thank you Brady.
Can I make a quick comment?
You sure can.
I just wanted to really thank, well, everybody's been very supportive of this, um, effort. And I appreciate the staff and administration working on it. But I think, um, vice chair Lopez was actually the one that proposed the incentive agreement in the beginning. Make sure to give a quick for that. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. I, I really appreciate it. I'm, I'm glad we got it done. Finally. Thank you.
I'm, I'm assuming that this was, the, the money that we've talked about and the number. number of people that will be helped, I assume that this is intended to be an annual kind of a thing? This is going to be on the budget, and that may go up or down as needed from year to year?
So, right now, in the inter-local, I think they've, they've been willing to commit $100,000 is what they're looking to do.
That's Weaver Basin's commitment, okay.
And so, that'll be a five-year term, is what's outlined in this.
You say $100,000?
Yeah, so, from year to year, we will need to go back and reassess as to what they're willing to commit.
Sure.
But ultimately, that's what they're willing to commit, this first initial go-around, and then, from there, we'll continue to have further discussions in years to come.
But from our side, we intend on replenishing as needed.
Okay, great. Question that I, that has come up from others, I think Greg actually brought it up the first time, he said, "The nurseries may be caught flat-footed with, you know, a lot of people wanting plants that they haven't got, because they didn't expect." And it might be who wants to, you know, go plant the seed, that, hey, you know, these things are coming, and I, I, I kind of expect that this is going to terminate next spring in, in big force. You know, it's so hot this summer, people probably aren't going to be out there digging up their strips this fall, or this summer. They're probably starting in the fall and finishing in the spring, is my guess. So, might be who wants to, you know, put a little tickler out there to the, to the local nurseries, and of the kinds of plants that, that are, this education program is telling people about, so they can be ready for the onslaught of that.
You can definitely do that, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's the only other thing that I could think of that, that might be a stumbling block to this program being successful, being able to get the plants.
Yeah, I know that, yeah. It's a concern for sure, supply and demand, it's, yeah, absolutely.
And you talked with, I think Weaver Basin has given you some experience from Leighton? And that's what kind of informed a lot of what we did. Can you help us with any of that at all?
Like, what specifics of?
Well, the number of people that we expect to, to apply.
So, I think earlier, beginning of the spring, there was about 500 applicants from Leighton, but Leighton was solely just them, too. So, that's, so it's substantial that they're, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Chair?
Yep.
I have a couple of comments.
But not for you, so, thank you. Just so you're not standing here. So, I just, I think that, obviously, this is really great that this happened, but I, I think that, I think that we need to do more, and, I mean, it's glad to roll these out and see how it goes, but maybe, maybe next year, hopefully, we can have some more in-depth conversations about, you know, about the situation of the water drought, and see, see if we can come up with more ideas and more initiatives to be a little more aggressive. I think it's a good, this is a good start, it's, it's a great start. I know there are many other things happening, like it was explained, so I really, I really appreciate all those efforts. And then, I just wanted to ask the mayor, if, Mayor, do, do you know, do you know by chance what might be happening at the state level, as far as any, any plans for water conservation? Do you or, or anyone know? I mean, like, should we, do we need to talk to someone else to hear more details about what plans might, might have? This is so broad, and so big, and so, right, that we're, we're limited at the local level on a lot of the things that we can do, and I'm just wondering what conversations might be going on at the state level.
I can tell you, it's one of the prime focuses of the Utah League of Cities and Towns, because it affects every city and town in the state right now. Some are hit harder, and some have different interests, agricultural versus urbanized areas. There's a lot that goes into it. I see Ben shaking his head, too. This is, this is not, this is such a dynamic issue, but, you know, being in the midst of a 1,200-year drought, this is something that has everyone's full attention down there. And the things we can do locally, help send a message, and, and whether you pull your strip or not, the fact that we're partnering with the Weber Water Conservancy District and all these other agencies, and sharing notes and collaborating on this, it's a shared priority for a lot of people. And so, I imagine those conversations will continue in a, in a very robust way. There are things we can do, there are things that we can't, but we're more than happy to do a deeper dive with this, and, and continue to share the information that, that comes forward. Before I leave, I want to thank Brady. Brady's worked really hard on this joint resolution. He and Jay have talked, had numerous, numerous work sessions with us as department directors, and what we think we can do, and what we might not be able to do, and I know they've been very involved with legal and some others. So, it's something that's got our full attention, it's something we will absolutely continue to work on. I think we get a weekly state of the water, in terms of where Pine View's at, and, and what particulates are in there, and, and where our water system is, so they're absolutely on top of what we can do, but it's a conversation that will continue. And I see one of the Weaver Basin Conservancy District Board members in the audience. I know she's nuts on a whole lot more plates at Roosters for willing, being willing to put her service into that, so I'll go ahead and thank him for your willingness to be a part of that, and to bring some of that information back as well. So, we have a lot of people paying a lot of attention to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Luis, I, I, I'm with you on that. I, I think there are some things that can be done. You know, there's, there's these, you know, stipends to help you with smart sprinkler controllers. Well, that's, that's just the tip of the, of the iceberg. I, I installed a, a deal on my home water supply that, that reminds me every day how much water I'm using, and it really kind of helps me to set goals, and it kind of go along with what Angel was talking about, you know, different levels of water use that people use. You probably ask 99% of the people in Ogden how much water they use, they got no idea, but they will if they have these, these little devices, and I think we need to incentivize people to, to do those. They're, they're actually for leak detection, but man, they do so much more, and I'd love to see us, you know, help people get those kind of things installed to, to raise awareness of how much water is being used. I don't know what else you do. I mean, you know, you just, you got to know where you start to know how to, how to get, make progress.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Councilmember Hire, I will, I will add that our water usage has gone down dramatically now that we've got three of our four girls out of the house. So, my results look a lot better than they did a couple of years ago.
Showers are a little shorter, you're saying?
So, you're saying to kick our kids out, is that?
I recommend it. It started differently, but my water use has gone down.
Sounds like the mayor's house could probably fill the Great Salt Lake. Okay, good discussion. Next item on our agenda is public comments. This is your opportunity to address the council on any item. Start with those in the chambers. Welcome. Please state your name and limit your comments to three minutes.
My name's Wilson Toman. I live near the Ogden River on Washington. Councilman Hire, I would like to recommend that we add another document, President Lincoln's Gettysburg address, specifically since it, it asks us, the citizens of this great nation, to rededicate ourselves and to sustain our constitutional rule of law.
It's a great suggestion. Thanks, Mr. Toman.
I just picked this up, but I had concern about what we were doing about auditing our projects and money spent, and I noticed that the city council is responsible for financial, conducting financial management audits, and looking at the organizational chart that the city recorder gave me, doesn't indicate there's an auditor adjacent to the city council. I don't know what your state charter, the state legislature allowed in the amended charter, under the constitutional changes to the city government, as it is now stands for a first-class city, but I suggest that that's something if you're legally able to, that should be addressed, and that should be someone responsible hired by the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toman. Welcome.
I didn't expect to talk. My name's Daniel Beatty. I live at 28th and Polk, and I've been really involved in the Flip Your Strip program at my home for quite a while. My park strip is, is 2,438 square feet, if you measure it in a straight line, but it crowns because of the 90-year-old maple trees that are there. I've had quite an ordeal getting my, my, my park strip essentially is, has been flipped. I went and got the land use permit, I paid attention to everything that was there, I talked to Councilman Blair repeatedly to, to get guidance for that, and, and I've gone to Weaver Basin to find out about the class. As of last Thursday, the class was still unavailable to Ogden residents because it had not been adopted, so I'd ask one thing, please, I don't know if it's, it's you, Mr. Johnson, please let them know, or she's here, let them know, so we can go take that class, because that's the only thing I'm waiting on, to turn in my portfolio here, my Flip Your Strip and the pictures, and everything that's been done. The 250 square foot isn't a shock, I thought it would go down, but I originally, I thought it was going to be more than that. I've used the same exact aggregate to the, to the extent as exactly what's along the cemetery, up along 20th Street, that Nephi cobble that's in there, and I have a sedum bed that's in there. Plants, as far as what's allowed, Councilman Hire, is I, J&amp;J Nursery and Valley Nursery have what we need, of everything that's on it. So, the two that are fairly local or pretty good size, they have what we need. You're probably not going to find it at Lowe's or Home Depot, but they have a lot of more decorative things, but the plants, the sedums, and the things that are required for that are there. I just asked that you put this out to everybody, to let this, to let folks know that this is going on. On a personal note, I'm, I'm just under $11,000 out of pocket that I've spent on my park strip to get it flipped. I am kind of a, a few of my neighbors don't like me very much, because I have Pine View water on speed dial, when I look up in their water, and with their house water at 11:15 during the day, and when I watched the supervisor come out the other day, he was three doors, three doors to the south of me, he spent 25 minutes watching that person water his lawn with his house while he was talking to the guy, and I'm like, "Cut his hose, turn it off," you know? Shouldn't be up to me to go do that, and I won't, but it just, we need to enforce the water usage, because it's, it's abused, you know, people watering their street. If anybody has any contact with Weaver State University up there, they water their grass during the day, and as well as the streets, they're trying to grow their streets bigger, apparently. If somebody can talk with Weaver State University and say, "Hey, you need to cut down on your, on your impact sprayers."
We're all going to use those.
Sorry, sir.
Clearly noted.
Something needs to be adjusted, but I drove around, tried to find those, turn it off, so, but thank you for, for passing this ordinance, this is a, this is a really good deal.
Thank you.
Just a real quick other thing, I've removed 32% of my grass area by doing this Flip Your Strip program, so that's.
What was the percent?
32.
32, huh?
32%, if you figure out the square footage-wise.
Thank you.
Feel free to come up, take a look. It's the only house up on 28th and Polk, east of the high school, with a big American flag and Marine Corps flag underneath it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night, thank you.
Hello. Hi, councilmembers. My name is Kathleen Hojsh, and I live in Harrisville, not Ogden, but the reason I'm here is I don't know if you guys have any say or pull. I am with Weber County Patriots, I don't know if you've heard of us, we're not them that go out like tearing buildings down or anything like that. I'm just here because last year, we were in your parade, in your, we had, and we had a float. It was a freedom float, it was decorated with American flags. This year, we applied to be in your parade, we paid the fees, and then we received a letter that we were denied, because last year, we were found offensive, and I find that really sad. Last year, we followed all the rules, we handed candy out, we had walkers that handed candy, as was required, we had a freedom boat that we did not bring, because we were told boats were not allowed, yet there were two other people that had boats there. We decorated a, a trailer instead, and so, when we heard that we were found offensive, we thought it was really sad, that the American flag would be found offensive in Ogden. The gentleman, he wrote a letter to the man who is over it, because his family settled Ogden. My husband was born in Ogden and grew up in Ogden. I, sorry, I'm not from Utah, I'm an implant, I've been here for quite a, quite a few years. This year, we had been in four parades already, we were just in the Leighton Parade, covered with flags, I have pictures of our float. We were told we were too loud. If playing Lee Greenwood's "God Bless America" is offensive, I'm sorry, but we had people in all four cities, standing up and cheering as a float went by, covered with American flags, several of them playing a Lee Greenwood song. And I would hope that if any of you had any pull, that maybe you can speak to the man, because it broke our hearts when we heard that we could not ignite that spirit of liberty and unity here in Ogden, so I thank you for your time.
For Member Bouchard?
Good evening. My name is Kim Bouchard, Ogden resident, and I think it's probably appropriate that I just share a few things, because I was at the meeting with, at Weaver Basin, and just really give some props to Brady and Ogden City, John Perry, they were so happy to get that deal done, the inter-local agreement. And then, sorry, I got distracted. So, this is my 11th year on Weaver Basin, and I have coined this phrase, "Weber Basin and Proud," and we are so lucky to be under their district, because, you know, there, there's so many work, and I did text Luis, or Councilman Lopez, I texted Scott Paxman, who's the new general manager of Weber Basin, and those meters are a thing. So, we've installed 12,000 meters for across, and this is over the tenure, like, this has all been the time since I've been on the board, we've installed about 12,000 meters for a cost of roughly $10 million. Some of those meters were installed by developers. For those that we have installed, that has cost us about $1,500 bucks per meter. This last thing was quite higher, there were $2,800 per meter due to inflation, workforce issues, and some backyard services. So, Weber Basin and all those other things are such a resource, and also, even just the Weaver State professors up there, Alice Mulder and those guys are just doing amazing things, but I really do think you're on to something with, it, maybe if we had a, a program that, just kind of like the Flip Your Strip, that we could subsidize the, the meters, because we do have such an interesting system here, where we just have Pine View irrigation, you turn it on, I mean, it's different everywhere, like, it's not that way in South Weber, I mean, they have to be metered, because they buy it directly from Weber Basin, so, anyway, there's definitely a lot of great ideas out there, but, I mean, Weber Basin and Proud, like, we have such a resource in them, and so, I will make sure that you get that class. I'm going to get your number before we go. And I think that's it, just thanks to all you do. Glad we got that ordinance, and obviously, there's just a lot more to come, but I would encourage everybody to get a meter, because it really does, Rich, you're right, it, it makes a difference, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to folks online, starting with Angel Castillo.
Good evening, Angel Castillo, Ogden resident. Again, this was a really monumental moment, and very exciting that we're doing something with Flip the Strip and participating, and I wholeheartedly agree with Vice Chair Lopez that we're going to need to continue to look for ways that we can do more, and, and I'm hopeful that in your proposed hiring of a energy-water conservation person, that, that we'll continue to explore these, because it's, it's really important. I'd like to also go back to Councilmember Hire's proposing, denying the petition to annex, and I, I wholeheartedly support it, but I'd like to also encourage you to take a little deeper look. The only person that opposed that in the Planning Commission was the, I can't remember if he's the chair now, but Rick Southwick was the only person who decided it wasn't a good idea. It was not a unanimous vote, and it really concerns me, because we're missing a whole bunch of numbers, because not only would it have been the tax, property tax loss that we're getting, but also, it has to do with water. If we were to let that go, you know, the Planning Commission was willing to lose $42,558 per year on those 50 units, because that uses our water, and if it was, that's 1.5 persons per, for the 50 units, and if you calculate that on one person, it's 30. And if you calculate that on one person, it's 34,566. Either way, if it's one person per unit, or it's one and a half persons per unit, you would have lost 56,000 or 64,000 in revenue. And that's really concerning to me. Why that wasn't brought up and caught? And I can't believe that this even got this far to be considered, that you would even think about it. And I know that we all voted against it, but it was just preposterous. I mean, we cannot continue to run our city as if it doesn't matter. You know, we're just, we have to make sure that we're getting fiscally responsible decisions from all of our commissions and making sure that we're making the best of what we have so that we can have extra money to do things like water conservation or raises for police and fire. I mean, every dollar counts, and we need to be a little more accountable. So I encourage you to think about that and talk about that as you move forward into budget. And thanks again for voting yes on the Flip the Strip. It's incredibly important. Thank you.
Thank you, Angel. Next on the list is Ed McKenny.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Ed McKenny in Utah, president of the Ogden Regional Airport Association, ORAA, a past member of the Airport Advisory Board, former airline pilot. The purpose of my comments tonight is to share some thoughts and suggestions from our ORAA board that will help the city council in Ogden City deal more effectively with current issues related to the airport and to increase accountability of tax dollars spent and ROI. Briefly, ORAA is made up of a large contingency of aviation professionals, including airline pilots, many large and small business owners, hangar, aircraft owners, attorneys, doctors, accountants, airport managers, craftsmen, and even NASA astronauts. Point in sharing this aviation expertise is ORAA's resources dwarfed out of Ogden City, which at last count, including even the current advisory committee, have no expertise, aviation expertise, other than the airport manager, Mr. Garrett. Recently, at a council work session, Mr. Garrett was queried about comments made by ORAA. We had raised systemic issues related to lack of navigational options and safety as factors why the airlines will not walk to Ogden. Mr. Garrett's response to you, and I quote, "ORAA simply does not know what they're talking about." Ladies and gentlemen of the council, the ORAA will not present unsubstantiated facts about any of the operational elements of Ogden Airport, and we encourage you to challenge us. To make our point, in my hand is an operational spec from an airline that recently pulled out of Ogden. It states specifically the facts that ORAA presented to the council. Our facts are substantiated. I quote, "Night circled to land, not authorized at any time." So is Ogden Airport a safe airport for the airlines to fly into? Of course it is. If weather is below minimums, the pilot will either hold or return to the point of origin. Pilots will not take risks. However, for an airline, Ogden can't provide the 24/7 access options compared to other airports, which is one of the many factors that airlines consider when evaluating an airport destination. So when Mr. Garrett claims, as he did two weeks ago, he will have Ogden at 90% of Provo Airport in 18 to 24 months, and for just $7 million, he is wrong and has not presented any substantive market information to support his claims. ORAA strongly believes this is a bad investment by Ogden City and taxpayers. Here's the issue. You, as a city council and city administration, have no other resources to validate Mr. Garrett's claims. I recently spoke with Mr. Garrett's former employer at Stanford Airport. His comment was, and I quote, "Mr. Garrett likes to row the boat by himself." Isn't it curious that all of the aviation experts and volunteers were fired from the airport board and replaced by laypeople from Weber State that have no aviation expertise? In other words, Mr. Garrett prefers to be the sole source of what is truth and right. As president of ORAA, I can assure you, we have nothing but positive intent for all things Ogden Airport. Our airport should be the crown jewel of Western US, not a toxic ghost town. As the city council, I encourage you to consider allowing the formation of a true advisory committee focused on validated, market-based facts and using the expertise of your airport stakeholders. This committee will show return investment and not just say wait two more years. If the airport manager is correct on an issue, we will support it. We appreciate your consideration. I hope you'll consider our offer. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ed. Next on the list is Heath Soto.
Hey, Heath Soto, Ogden resident. Just a couple added notes on the water situation. I am glad to hear about the new developments not causing a problem with our water levels. And I'm all for us having more housing. But I feel a little bit of a disconnect with us being told that we need to conserve water, we've got to watch everything, and things are really tight, things are really dry, while we're also being told that thousands of new dwellings will have plenty of water and there's literally zero concern about that. You know, I'm wide open to the prospect that I'm missing something, but it seems like statements that are counter to one another. And I'd love some clarification on that for my own interpretation. And the other thing is, I would ask that the city works to get more information about our drought to the industrial area out here. A lot of these areas are owned by people that don't live here or don't really even come out here, but they have these huge green lawns attached to, you know, outside of all these. I saw a storage place, just, you know, 1 o'clock in the afternoon watering. And I leave work, sometimes I leave my shop at like 1:00 a.m., and the water's all going at these other places. And it's just, yeah, hundreds of gallons of water just jumping down the gutters. And it's sad. And, you know, I can't go around and report every single one of them. So I would encourage the city to go out and find these lawns out here in the industrial area that are just so big and so green. And just give them a kind note saying, hey, we're all in this together. We need to work on this situation and not water so much. Thanks.
I shared my comments during acknowledgements and throughout, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Chair, I am really kind of curious as to what happened in the back of the room about the flag, the float, flag, flag float. Any comments?
I gave her my card, asked her to send me the letter she got, pictures of her float, and then I would look into it.
Okay. Thank you. That is pretty, that flabbergasts me as well if all those facts were true. So hopefully, we don't get to falling all over ourselves based on a very small contingent of people that find patriotism offensive, especially at this time of year.
We will look into that and report back.
Okay. And the other thing that kind of came up that I thought about is, you know, with the annexing petition from North Ogden, the planning commission did give a recommendation to do that, and it was, I think, six to one or something like that. They're not full right now, but, and I don't think they did it wrong. They don't look at some of those other factors. And that's maybe my recommendation, is that we give them some more criteria to base those kind of recommendations on. You know, we get to look at the financial stuff. They don't get that. They don't get any of that kind of data. They were, I'm just going to assume, I don't know, nobody told me why they voted the way they did, but, you know, just for that project, it seemed to make sense. But it didn't make sense in the broader sense for Ogden City. So I think maybe we ought to, maybe bring that up in your staff meeting. How do we give those volunteers the tools that they need to make those recommendations that will be more in line with what's healthy for the city, not a particular project?
Thank you. Anyone else?
I guess I have a follow-up comment about that. I guess, I mean, it wasn't too long ago that we took finances out of their information packet, right? So we took that kind of off their plate. I think that might be a little bit counterintuitive. But I think it is our role to play that. I don't know if we want them delving into all of that area or the political ramifications of that.
Well, yeah, I just think it's, you know, even from when I was a planning commissioner, we didn't discuss the finances of stuff. It just wasn't part of the calculus. So.
But I'm not saying they did something wrong. I'm just saying.
Right. Like I said, I don't think they did anything wrong either, but.
I just wanted to respond to Wilson's comment about the auditor. I'm sure that our staff can give you some of the auditing reports that we have because we do have an annual report for that, Wilson. We do have auditing happening.
Okay. Anyone else? I have a couple of comments. First off, I echo Mr. Beatty's plea to get that class available to everyone. Otherwise, I think we need to consider giving him a stipend for the many people that have come and look at his lawn, look at his strip, and for the dozens of people he's referred down to this program. So I appreciate Mr. Beatty and his willingness to go through that and to do that, and in the effort he took to do it well. And like I said, I do think it's infectious, and many other people will do it because of him. So I appreciate his work and his efforts, and hopefully, this will start another beautification project throughout our city. And speaking of things that are beautiful about our city, I've said numerous times, I don't, I love art, I don't understand art, and I probably can't afford the best art. But last Friday, I had the opportunity to go down to the First Friday Art Stroll, and I just was amazed at not only how talented many people in our community really are, truly are, but also how awesome our community is to provide that, to provide an opportunity for everyone to come down and experience art, to learn about art, to see art, and also for those businesses in our downtown to work together and to provide a space for art to be displayed. And I just, we talk a lot about our city and the many things that make our city unique. And I, again, I've always said that art is one of the things that separates our city from any other, but it's also the people here in this city that truly understand the beauty of art and the opportunity to share that art with others. And because it benefits people like me, people that enjoy it, just really don't know how to do it or how to appreciate it maybe as much as others. So I do appreciate it. And I can report, Councilmember Stevens, though he did a lot of great things up here, he truly was hiding his talents as a true artist. It was neat to go down and see the art that he's been working on. So I just, I appreciate that. It was, when I left here Friday night, sad that I didn't have tickets for the Raptors game, but when I left the downtown Friday, I was really, really pleased and really proud to be a member of this community and a member to, to be able to go down and truly participate in those wonderful events that many people, not us, put on behind the scenes. So I just wanted to say thanks. Thanks, Ford. Anyone else?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. I know that probably for the last several months, at least, the regular topic has been the Marriott Sliderville challenges and things. And last week, Councilmember Hare and I and Janine and Mayor Caldwell had a chance to attend an open meeting at Marriott Sliderville. And, you know, it's an interesting thing, when you get a bunch of people in the room and you put faces with names and you just talk, good things can happen. And so I just was really impressed with not only the tone of the meeting and some of the results that came about out of that. Boyer did a great job fielding some very difficult questions and challenges with what's been going on. And Mayor Van Lewen, he stood up and he did a great job as well as accepting, you know, his role in everything that's going on there. And so just overall, the meeting was, it was just a great meeting. I hung out as long as I could to chat with as many people as I could. And I just feel like, you know, there's definitely some progress made on that front. So.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Thanks, you guys. Entertaining motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hare, second by Councilmember Lopez. This is a voice vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, we're adjourned.